Good evening and welcome to the January 25, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Henderson lead us with the invocation. So if you would please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Henderson.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this great day that we've had. We thank you for this meeting that we have to assemble, review priorities in the city, make good solid decisions for the people that live here that you've put us in charge of, and we just ask for your guidance and assistance as we make those decisions. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. This meeting is called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Here.
I did receive correspondence from Councilwoman Hoderick that she would be out of the county this evening and unable to attend the DDA Authority study session as well as this council meeting, so I will move to excuse the absence of Councilwoman Hoderick at the special joint city council and downtown development authority and regular city council meeting of January the 25th, 2016.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we excuse the absence of Councilwoman Hoderick from both meetings this evening due to being out of the county. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. First order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four this evening, so it's my honor to handle C1, which is an MMC recognition to City Clerk Elaine Dixon, and I'd like to meet her at the podium and make a presentation. She's been here before, she knows how to do this. It seems like every week or two where I'm standing at the podium recognizing somebody from our city staff that's done an excellent job or is getting some sort of a recognition from an international-recognized school or institute, so this evening I have the honor of being here this evening and presenting the International Institute, or from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks that hereby confers the designation of Master Municipal Clerk upon, do I have to say M? Elaine Dixon, MMC now, in fulfillment of the requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and this was presented on the 29th of December, 2015, and it's my honor on behalf of the Troy City Council and staff to present this to you, Elaine. Congratulations, I know this took many, many hours to accomplish, and congratulations to you and thanks for what you do for the city.
Thank you.
I know you probably don't want to say anything, but I'm going to make you say something, and if you could, tell what you have to do to get this. It's quite an accomplishment, and let us know how many of these there are in the state of Michigan, I don't think there's too many.
Thank you, Mayor. This plaque represents approximately 600 hours of education and conferences and meetings. It took me about four years to complete it, and as far as I know, there are something like six MMCs in Oakland County. I'm not sure of the number for the whole state, but this is definitely something that not very many clerks are able to achieve, so I'm really appreciative to City Manager Kishnik and the mayor and city council for always supporting educational efforts for all of the staff members, and also I have my daughters here today, Amelia and Nora, and they've been very, they've been very patient and understanding with all of the meetings and conferences and committees and everything that I've had to do in order to achieve this, so thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Next is C2, which is a coyote update, and I'd like to ask Captain Redmond to come forward, and he'll introduce his team that's going to make a special presentation this evening regarding the coyote issue in Troy. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have with me today Police Service aide Stephen Valancourt, he's a 19-year veteran of the police department, and thankfully, we have somebody from the DNR representing the coyote issue. She appears to be pretty much an expert on it, been very helpful for us. Her name is Holly Vaughn. Without further, let's see, we did hand out to you the pamphlets that concerned all the information we have provided so far, and there'll be more to come tomorrow, and they are prepared to proceed with their PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. As you know, this has been a hot topic in the city and I think in the surrounding communities too, so thanks for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
All right.
Who's first?
I just want to point out, my name is Steve Valancourt, started this study a while ago. Got a couple pictures of a couple coyotes right here at the Nature Center. Right here, we have a map of the sightings of the coyotes in the city of Troy. Now, this is from emails, Facebook, from citizens, this is also from DPW workers and police officers as well, throughout their beets. A lot of these yellow dot squares that you see right there are doubled up, they're seeing the same coyote. So you have under 100 coyotes in the city, realistically, probably 40, 40 to 50.
Steve, can you use the microphone? We are recording and, thank you.
Realistically, you have approximately 40 to 50 coyotes in the city. A lot of those yellow squares are doubled up and they're double sightings.
I think that'll make more sense as we move through the presentation, thanks.
So we do have coyotes in every county in Michigan, they're present everywhere. Most people are surprised to learn that coyotes are present in urban areas, including the city of Troy. They're very adaptable creatures and have shown that they can survive in many different environments, including an urban environment. So they're roughly 20 to 45 pounds, so the size of a small dog. They often look larger when you see them on the landscape due to their thick, shaggy coat, and especially this time of year, they have their winter coats on, so they look a lot larger. They're generally shy, they can become habituated to human presence, however, and may venture closer to human residences in areas like ours where there are plenty of people and plenty of activity around. They prefer prairies, meadows, brushy areas, woodland edges, they can be found in, you know, in desert habitats and other parts of the world, but here, in our area, woodland edges, meadows, agricultural fields, those are some places where they can be found. So they build their dens on slopes, hillsides, under rocks, and their home range in the wild is up to about 20 square miles. Here in the city, you'd see coyotes about 2 to 5 square miles here in the city. So based on that sightings map that we saw, might have, you know, maybe four or five families of coyotes living in the city. So coyotes hunt small mammals and birds, so generally, they prefer smaller animals like mice, chipmunks, voles, things like that. They will occasionally take birds when they have an opportunity, sometimes they do eat fawns, but for the most part, they feed on very small animals. They hunt for food alone, they don't hunt in packs like wolves do, and generally, our eastern coyotes don't travel in packs. They usually move in a solitary fashion. Occasionally, we'll see them together in family groups, which will be parents with pups moving around, so. They're most active at dawn and dusk. They can be seen during the day, however, and that's not necessarily an indication that an animal is sick or dangerous. A lot of times, especially this time of year in the spring, during March and April, when they're feeding their pups, they're more active in the daytime, so don't be alarmed. And of course, just seeing a coyote isn't necessarily reason to panic. They're here, they actually offer great services to us by taking care of some of the small mammals that might otherwise become pests to us, so they do, they're good to have around. So the breeding season lasts from January until, the pups stay with parents until about June, so this time of year, what they're doing is they're establishing their territories, building their dens, getting ready to have their pups in March, April, and May. The average litter size is about six pups. They grow pretty quickly, they're weaned in about five to seven weeks, and of course, not every pup that's born survives. Survival of the fittest out there for these little guys. So coyotes can live to be 13 to 14 years in the wild, the average is one to four years, so there are a lot of factors that prey into coyote mortality, whether it be car accidents or, you know, being eaten by larger predators.
For the management of coyotes, coyotes can be trapped in the city by a properly licensed animal nuisance control company. They have to have animal nuisance business license, doing business as, and they also have to have a permit from the DNR in order to do this. A property order can't trap unless they have the proper license. List of license and nuisance control companies can be found on the Michigan gov.wildlife. A list of Troy-specific nuisance control companies can be posted on the city of Troy website tomorrow, that I'm presently working on right now, and it will be done tomorrow. Attack on pets. More likely, small pets are allowed to roam free without supervision. The prevention of this thing is keep your pets on a leash at all times, dusk and evening hours especially. It's a terrible time, that's when the coyotes are out doing their hunting, you want them on a leash. Don't feed your pets outside, clean up the yard after them outside, and remove any extra food whatsoever that you have outside for any kind of animal. And believe it or not, attack on pets happen very, it's very uncommon that it happens. In the 19 years that I've been here, it's only been five. Preventing conflicts, never feed approach or touch a coyote, eliminate all outside food sources, especially pet foods, bird seed, and garbage. They're very opportunistic animals, and they are a lot like a raccoon, and if you've got a garbage can out there, they go for it. Clean out all wood brush piles, it's a good habitat for rats and mice, which is a good food source for the coyote itself. Haze the coyotes, make yourself look bigger than them, be noisy, they don't want anything to do with you. Coyotes do not like the odor of ammonia or perfume, and they do not like lights or sounds. There's strobe lights that you can use in your yard that deters the coyote itself. This right here is actual pictures of coyotes from Troy. I got one at the Nature Center right there and a couple on Folkstone, and right here, right where the laser is, this coyote right here, and this one is a prime example of what not to do. This is filled with apples and bird seed. This is empty and he's still coming in for it, looking for it. They're just like teenagers, they're going to come in and look for food until it's gone. Right here is a couple more pictures that I took with trail cams, it's kind of hard to see in here, but as you can see right here, this coyote right here is from Big Beaver in I-75, which is basically the top of Troy. If you look on your side cameras, it's a better picture. That's the same coyote, same location. Once again, same coyote, same location. Here's one from the Nature Center. You can see him right up here, he's eating right now, this is a video.
Did you bait that? Is that one you baited?
I fed that one. And here's another one. This particular coyote right here took over a week just to get this deer. Last day I checked it, I was like, okay, forget it, this deer didn't get hit at all. I left my scent, he didn't want anything to do with it until the last day, and I was really surprised to see the videos.
Basically, we've shown you the coyotes that we found in Troy. Part of the reason for the trail cameras we put up in different spots in the city is we were looking to see if we could gather information or see that the coyotes were running in packs. We didn't learn from her until today that technically or legally or whatever doesn't happen that they don't do that. We didn't find anything more than two coyotes in one area, and that was only in one of the pictures. Every time the trail cameras picked up, it was just one coyote walking around looking for food, so that was a learning point for us that they don't run in packs in Troy, we haven't seen that. What we can advise homeowners in the city of Troy to do is if the landowner feels that a coyote should be removed from their property, they may obtain services from a licensed nuisance animal control company. We don't handle that as a police department, the county doesn't handle it, Oakland County, so the homeowners are kind of on their own in that matter if they have trouble with one. We will be supplying an up-to-date list, we're making the phone calls, we'll make sure every number we have is still in business, there seem like viable companies, they're fairly priced, and we will have that up on the website tomorrow for all the residents to view. Clearly, if any resident feels there is immediate danger of a coyote on their property, call the Troy Police Department, we will respond to that and help them out, but there isn't a whole lot we can do about coyotes, they're here to stay. I'd like you to make the same point to them that you made to us early about if we wanted to eradicate and get rid of all the coyotes in Troy, what that might entail. Okay, could you do that real quick?
So if you were to remove all the coyotes in the city, which would be quite a challenge, but if you were, other coyotes would certainly move in soon in their place, within a matter of months probably, so, and it could potentially cause, you know, struggles for territory and struggles for power with the new coyotes that are in the area, so it could potentially cause, you know, problems beyond issues that you're seeing currently. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
Can you go back a couple pictures to that one before the video? Keep going. That one right there, would you say that coyote is on the bigger side? What would you say that one would weigh approximately?
It can be tough to tell from a picture, but based on what I see there, I'd say that's probably a mid-sized coyote.
Mid-sized, 30 to 40 pounds?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So just a comment, not so much a question, just a comment, you said they're great to have around. Well, my friend that had her dog, her schnauzer, taken out by two coyotes, and so they do travel together in Troy occasionally, I mean, it probably doesn't happen on a regular basis, but, so she had her schnauzer, which is a medium-sized dog also, taken out, and it was carried down the street until the homeowner, her husband, you know, went out the door running after the dog, and then they dropped it because they realized they couldn't outrun them. So how is that, so that must be very rare for that to happen, for two coyotes working together would kind of like, you know, case a house, basically, because they must have known that the dogs would come out in the morning for a certain amount of time and then go back in the house?
It's probably a mated pair that came to that house. They may have, they may have a den in the area and have been, you know, around the area, and maybe they did learn the pattern of when the dog goes outside, but an important thing to remind people is not to leave your pets, especially small dogs and cats, unattended and out of view outside in areas where, you know, coyotes are frequent, because that, you know, attacks can happen, so.
Thanks.
Just be mindful.
So just a quick follow-up, so we realize it is rare, so as long as people are cognizant of the fact that there are coyotes in Troy, which I had no idea, I still haven't seen one, my wife has, but I've never seen one, just to, you know, be aware that it could happen and keep an eye on your pets.
Absolutely.
It's not like it's any danger to, you know, people, but, you know, small dogs could be in danger.
That's correct. We haven't had any attacks on humans in Michigan, any reported attacks, so, you know, there's not a big concern there.
Great. And they would probably also not attack a small dog if a human was, you know, on a leash, right? I mean, if humans walk into a dog, they're not going to, they're not, okay.
Absolutely.
Good.
Any other questions from Councilman Henderson?
You answered one of them, we had talked earlier about human attacks, so that is a highly unlikely situation to happen, so we're talking about just fur-bearing other animals that might be in your household that, unattended.
Absolutely.
The question I had also, or one of the comments I had earlier, we spoke to, that all the surrounding communities had these, so it's not a unique situation to the city of Troy. And to your point, you know, if we eradicated them all, if we were able to round them up, get rid of them, they would all migrate here because we have a good food source, so.
Absolutely, and you've got great habitat here in Troy for coyotes.
And then, and then lastly, we talked about homeowners, what they can do personally to dispatch, get rid of a coyote that becomes a nuisance, and if somebody were to get a fur-bearer's license and they could live-trap the animal, I think, did we discuss that, our ordinance would allow that? If they did that, though, they could not relocate the animal, they would simply have to dispatch the animal.
That's correct. Relocating live-trapped animals is illegal in Michigan.
Any other questions from councilmen? I thought it was a great report, now, at least when somebody calls us or sends us an email, we are going to have this on our webpage, and we'll have resources on the webpage of who to contact. I know it's not cheap, I think I heard $700 a day to hire.
We have about cheaper companies by going through this list, so we will have that all on the website by tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Good job, great job.
Thank you, yes.
Next is C3, a residential property update. I'll ask City Manager Kishnik to introduce our guest this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. At a few of the past city council meetings, it was brought up by council member and former Pro Tem Campbell to have an update provided on the residential update on the property at Town Center in Liverny. Tonight, well, over that time, we've made contact with the owner Jerry Amber and his representative Dennis Cowan, who are here tonight to provide an update, so if they could come forward and do that, that's how we get started.
Good evening, Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Amber.
Mr. Amber, good evening.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I could go through the long history of how we got here, but if you have questions about that, we'll be glad to answer them. What I'd like to say is what we've done and how we're moving forward into the future. Clearly, our contractor underground has not performed as we had expected and hoped, so in November, Mr. Amber took the unprecedented step and ordered his architect to change the scope of construction so that the work for this contractor would be reduced in half. What it really meant is instead of having a second floor of poured concrete walls, it would be framed. He instructed the architect to submit the plans, they were submitted to your building department on December 15th. It cost about $30,000 to have these plans redone. You won't notice anything when the project's complete, the exterior is still going to be the same, it's the interior structure that will be changed. So we submitted those plans, your building department, we want to thank them, did an absolutely great job over the holidays, and we were called on Friday that the permit, revised permit was ready to be picked up, and this morning, Mr. Amber paid $5,500 for the revised permit, and as soon as we are substantially complete with the poured walls, you may have noticed the second set of poured walls was poured on Friday, there's a tarp there now, there's heat that he's brought in to quicken the cure period for the concrete walls, which unfortunately were in winter conditions. We have 14 of the 24 walls are up, the remaining 10 will take about two or three weeks to complete, maybe a little bit longer if we get a bad snowfall or something of that nature, but we have given you a projected milestones that we will start in mid or late February with the framing. We're going to start framing before the walls are complete because we can go from east to west. All the contracts that will allow a normal progression of the project once the framing continues, starts, have been let. All of the materials have been, are either ready for delivery or are in production and will be ready at the appropriate time, so we have, I think, under the circumstances, done the right thing for the project and for the community and tried to expedite. We're still stuck with the work that remains with this contractor, it's almost over, everybody else is ready to go. So we have given you a timeframe, those are outside timeframes, if we get, if we're lucky and have good winter conditions, and so far, we've been blessed with that, and if that continues, some of those dates will move up, and hopefully, you know, it's going to be sooner rather than later. later. But we wanted to give you a realistic timeframe, once we are able to extricate the contractor from the job that has to finish these poured walls. It's a specialty construction. I think I might have told, I think we explained when we had a meeting last week, or about two weeks ago, actually, that it's a specialty construction. There's not many companies to do it. Nobody else would bid on it. So, we had to deal with what we had, the hand we were dealt with. And what's unfortunate is that this is a contractor that, quite frankly, we've used on the last ten projects without a problem. I won't go into all their problems that they've had. They become our problem, and we've acted as expeditiously, and I think shown with our actions of what we've done recently. In the end, it will expedite the project. I know you don't see it now, and I know it's frustrating, but that's where we're at.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. Just to say a few words, we are very committed to the project. We get calls every day, and people want to rent them, and we said, "Not yet. We're still in construction," but the interest is there for sure. The contracts are in place, as Dennis said. The materials that are specially ordered, of which there are many, are in production. The local bank, it's an independent bank from Troy, is the lender. They're up to speed on what's happening. They are eager to be part of the community. No one has a greater interest in getting things moving than we have, and we're working on it, and we hope to get it back on track real soon. February, things will take off, we hope, by the end of the month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's a couple of questions from staff or from council. Councilman Campbell?
Yes. I mean, to start, you've answered most of the questions, but you have to understand that people who are around that every day, not knowing what's going on, people are very concerned. They were concerned if you had financial issues. I mean, the questions were, it was becoming a eyesore. You don't see equipment on the site. You don't have any workers there. It's taking so long. So, if your contractor's your problem, I can appreciate you don't have much control over them. So, you're going to be finished now, let's say, at the spring of seventeen, you're going to be ready for occupancy.
If not sooner.
Okay. So, now, the second piece of property, where you wanted to build the other one on Livernoy, are you going to use the same contractor there?
No. That is absolutely going to be the case.
Yeah, it's a different building with different... The concrete walls is the critical issue, and there are very limited use of concrete walls. It's a three-story building and a four-story building, which is at the root of it. But I can tell you that we got demolition clearance from the utilities. We're about to demolish it, probably also in February, the building that's there at eighteen-twenty-four Livernoy. But the architects will be designing during the spring and summer. We haven't designed the detailed work yet, but we're going to get the utilities going late in the year is our goal.
When would you plan starting that project up?
Well, we want to see more accomplishment...
I'd like to see this one done first.
Well, almost done, near the end. So, our thinking is the fall of this year, we'll start the underground. We want to take advantage of the weather. So, if we can get the underground utilities in by the end of the year, that would be a good accomplishment so that work can begin thereafter.
Appreciate it.
And we have, Mr. Amber has offered to the fire department to use the house on that site on Livernoy as a training exercise for the fire department. So, if, whenever the chief's ready...
We've got about three weeks.
We've got about three weeks. And we've done it in other communities, and it really works out great. We hope they'll be able to take advantage of it, but I know it's a timing thing, so.
Mr. Kishnik, I think you could pass that along to the fire department if it hasn't been done already.
Yeah, he's mentioned that.
I spoke to, I think, Fire Marshal Kaloya.
Microphone, please.
Yeah, I mentioned it to the fire marshal, and hadn't heard back. We're moving forward, so we've got about three weeks.
We'll follow up.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, I just want to express to you that we all appreciate the investment that you've made in the community, especially in this particular section. Residential here is, I think, a real critical piece to the overall plan for the Big Beaver Corridor and trying to establish some sort of walkability. So, the questions that we get from the community, we just need to address them, but we certainly appreciate the efforts here and the cost that has been added on for the length of time, so.
Well, the good news is we're getting calls every day, and they're from Troy residents because they pass it every day. So, the good news is you have people who still want to live here, just in a different, you know, different mode of living. So, that's positive.
Any other questions from council? Thank you for coming this evening. You know, I recognize that Mr. Amber did not have to come tonight, and I certainly appreciate that, and I think council does, because I think it does show that there is a commitment from Mr. Amber. And many times, we would make a request to have somebody come, and they wouldn't come. So, appreciate you taking the time to come tonight to answer some questions that we're getting asked all the time. And hopefully, this will put that to rest for a little bit, and we'll continue to see some progress, so.
Actions speak louder than words.
They do.
The best we can.
They do.
And, you know, this council and the community and the staff have supported the Amber family of projects and what's been here for a number of years. They're committed to the city, and we would never refuse a request to come before this body.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Thank you. C4 is a water quality update. I believe Tim Resnick is not here this evening, so I know we have an able representative to come here tonight. I heard this presentation earlier today, and you did a great job. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm here tonight to update you on the water supply here in the city of Troy. And as we all probably know, water is a very hot topic right now in this area. And the first thing I'd like to talk about is that on January first of this year, Great Lakes Water Authority, which we have been kind of talking about for a couple of years now, has officially taken over as the leadership and control of the Detroit Water and Sewer System, that is, the regional treatment and system that supplies all suburban customers. Now, DWSD is still an entity, but they are now basically in charge of strictly the city of Detroit and their system. And they are now a retail customer, just like we are, to the Great Lakes Water Authority. And even though they're in their infancy, I believe we're going to see some good things come out of this. They have created a board that has representation from not only the city of Detroit, Oakland County, Macomb, Wayne, and the state of Michigan. Our representative is Bob Dadal, who we have had here before to talk to you about it. And I think we are in good hands with his representation here in Oakland County. But when things start to take shape, I'll come back and let you know more about what's Great Lakes Water Authority doing. But right now, the topic that I hear a lot of, and a lot of people are asking, is if another community has a problem in their water system, and they are tied into the Great Lakes Water Authority system, does it affect us here in Troy? Well, it doesn't. I mean, what we have here is this system that was the Detroit system that is Great Lakes Water Authority is a massive system. It's one of the largest in the country. And they pump water to almost all of southeastern Michigan. They have a plant up in Port Huron, and they also have a plant down in Detroit. They have a couple down in Detroit. But we mainly get ours from, eighty percent of our water here in Troy comes from the Port Huron plant. And about twenty percent does come from the northeast plant that they have down in the city of Detroit that does pump out near Belle Isle. Now, this thing that people, I have to really make sure that they know, is that even though this name has changed to Great Lakes Water Authority, our source of water hasn't changed. Our source of water is still the same we had before. And we get our water down. It comes through, and it goes over to a pumping station, as you can see there on the map, at M-Lay City. And at M-Lay City, these are massive pumps here. We're talking something that in this system pumps, you know, on an average day right now, three hundred million gallons a day. And it can, capacity is far greater than that. So, at that point, it diverts some of the water that they have, and it heads toward the west, toward Genesee County and over in that area. Once it goes through that pump station, it cannot return. You have pressures build up behind these pumps. You also have backflow prevention on these pumps. That, once that pump is pumping it towards, say, the south there, toward Troy, it cannot reverse flow in any way whatsoever and head back up to the north. The same is if it had west, it cannot come back to the east. It's just an impossibility the way the system's configured. So, down, I'm sure all of you have probably seen there at South Boulevard in DeQuinter, there's the huge Detroit or Great Lakes Water Authority building there, and that's another pump station, in the same situation there. Once that water gets into that reservoir and that pump station, it's there, and it goes and it disperses it to the other communities like Troy. And each community is actually separate from each other. We do not share water. Once the Detroit Water or the Great Lakes Water Authority supplies us with water, say, here in Troy, if it comes into our system, it stays in our system. It does no, there's no way it can go to, say, Birmingham or to Bloomfield. It's here. Once we have it through our meters and our pits, it's basically backflow protected in. It cannot leave here. And same goes with other communities that could have a possible problem. And once it's in their system, it cannot come back to another city system or another community's system. So, the big topic right now is lead. And how does lead get into drinking water? Well, the lead really isn't in the water itself. The lead is more in the service lines and the piping that was over years has been installed. Lead was a very common product back in the early fifties, forties. There was actually ordinances and codes in some communities that required lead water services. And I have to tell you that here in Troy, that we have copper services. And I've been with the water department for twenty-nine years. And I sat back and I thought about how many, if we have uncovered lead services. Well, over the twenty-nine years, I can recall three that we have found in the city of Troy. And two of them were back like in the early nineties, and they were both in the same basic area. And at that time, both of them were replaced by the homeowner right away. On the city's own side of the water system, they were copper already, but there was just somehow there was there. And the other one we found was just more recently. It was at a foreclosed home. And once it was uncovered also, the new homeowner replaced it the next day. Now, are there some others? There could be. But the thing to remember is that we have been on the Detroit system for many, many years, which is now the Great Lakes Water Authority. They treat their water in such a way that it creates a pH balance in this water that is very friendly to the piping systems. It does not leach any type of materials out of the system. The water works, and they know this. They've done this a lot. They pump a lot of water. And you have to look at a lot of communities older than us that may have far more of a lead situation. They don't have a problem when they're on this Detroit or Great Lakes Water Authority system. What happens is if that corrosive, the pH isn't adjusted in the water, it becomes more of a corrosive nature. And when it does, it can actually kind of attack the linings of these pipes. And when it attacks the linings, it can actually leach, say, lead out of a lead water service or out of lead plumbing. Faucets, for instance, until nineteen-eighty-six were allowed to have lead in them. And in nineteen-eighty-six, they basically wrote a rule, the EPA did, that said that you could no longer put lead in any type of plumbing fixture. And even the lead solder. But as long as that water is treated correctly, it's never been an issue. It's when you don't treat it correctly, and it becomes a corrosive nature, it can leach this lead and start to let it migrate through your system. So, it does wear away. There's, the normal pH water, the good neutral pH water, actually creates kind of a coating in the piping, and it protects it. So, in two thousand and eleven here, the water quality report that we received, it showed that we had, on the samples that they took, ninety percent of the samples that they took had a lead content of one point one parts per billion. Now, lead and copper are tested by the EPA or required by the Safe Drinking Water Act every three years. So, in two thousand and fourteen, that was our next test that we had here in this region of Troy. And at that time, the test showed, no test came back with any lead in them. Now, how much is a part per billion? Well, I tried to put it in perspective. It was hard to really make it story because that's a big number. And this was what we can, basically, we thought was the best way to look at it, was a half a tablespoon in this Olympic-sized swimming pool would be one part per billion. Now, the one community that did have some problems had far larger amounts than that. I mean, the maximum contaminant level's fifteen parts per billion by the EPA standards, which we are not even close. I mean, zero, I can't be happier being in charge of the water department when I have a percentage of zero. And I contribute a lot of that to the new plumbing standards. And I think a lot of it came from the old plumbing in the homes, you know, the lead solder and the faucets. And since there's none of that and everybody's updating, it's really removing a lot of the lead from the systems. So, here in Troy, we are a very young community compared to some others. You know, we have a very modern infrastructure. Most of our infrastructure, you know, the oldest stuff is from the sixties and seventies, and very little of it is left that was even from, you know, when Troy was first became a city. We are very proactive in our maintenance. If we do find a problem, we fix it. We don't let it go, and we don't hide it. If there is an issue with any type of situation that doesn't look right, we get on it and we take care of it. We do backflow testing. And backflow testing is important just for the fact that, say, a commercial business was doing some type of process in their building that could be a contaminant, it can no law, it cannot leave that building and get back into the rest of the domestic water system. And we also do meter replacements on a regular basis. We try to get in the homes and keep the meters updated, make sure that they are the most modern ones available and accurate, and just make sure that everything's as good as it can possibly be. So, what I wanted you to leave tonight with is to say that any water that Great Lakes Water Authority sends to this other community cannot, in any way possible, end up back here in Troy because of the pumping operations that are in place and the backflow operations and controls that are also in place. So, with that, I'm open to any questions that you may have about what's going on with the water right now.
Thank you, Paul. I think that answered the main question that was asked, whether, if there was a water main break along the line that went from here to Flint, would there be any chance whatsoever that the backflow from a break could come back?
I think the biggest thing we need to really think about here is that the reason Flint is back on the Detroit water system is because the water that the Great Lakes Water Authority is pumping is good water. And they're even saying that it may recote their piping within a few months, and it'll be good, even though I know that they have, you know, concerns. But if they had a main break, they would isolate that piece of pipe and repair it. And before it would be put back into service again, they would have to do testing on it to make sure that the water inside that, once they refilled the main and rechlorinated it, that everything was back up to proper levels and be safe to drink again. So, no, that wouldn't be an issue.
Any other questions for Paul?
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. So, we will move to public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And I will call upon David Giroux, Troy resident, to speak on C2. Good evening, Dave. David?
Good evening. So, I've lived in Troy my entire life. I'm almost thirty-three years old. I showed up for the presentation on coyotes or coyotes. I'm ignorant. I don't even know what, how to pronounce it.
Yeah.
I've never seen them ever in my life, up until six months ago. I've now seen three instances. I've seen at least two different coyotes. In the summertime, my two young daughters saw two run through our yard in the middle of the day. A month ago, I saw one six feet from my dog who was chained up. I hazed him, as I learned tonight, and he ran away. On Thursday night, I failed as a dog owner, and my wife and I let the dog out for a few minutes, probably about two, and he was attacked. minutes, probably about two, and he was attacked. He has four puncture wounds in his neck. He survived. We had a very large vet bill, but I'm a voice, I'm a face. It happens. I do not believe they have good causes here or eliminating mice or birds. I'd rather see them gone. If there's nothing we can do about it, at least we can educate everybody. One suggestion, maybe retrieve a list of dog owners from, I believe it's Oakland County. I don't think the city does that anymore. Maybe snail mail out the link onto the website or the map showing the instances of sightings and/or attacks. Maybe document this in a more complete manner, and we can address it in five years if it's tripled. A coworker of mine showed me a picture of a coyote that he killed that was going to attack his 45-pound beagle. They're killing machines. They really are. If I learned something, I learned what they really are, what they do, how to prevent it, be proactive. I understand that. But I'd hate to be up here in three years and let you know that a coyote attacked one of my children. I heard it's rare that they will attack small dogs. It happened. My dog lived. I had a very expensive vet bill. I have a very good education on it now, but they do attack humans as well. So, maybe if we could only do one thing, it's learn from it and possibly educate everybody on it. And how's the best way to do it? A link to a website would help, it wouldn't hurt. But I think maybe go beyond that and retrieve every registered dog owner in the city of Troy. Educate them and let them know that they should be providing dates, times, when their sightings and/or attacks, so we can build a better database of this. Just my suggestions. Councilman, Councilman Dave Henderson asked that. I look at the PowerPoint that was here. It was very educational. I didn't know half of that. And like I said, I don't even know how to pronounce it. I don't even know what the animal's called.
I think you're okay either way.
They're here. What's that?
I think you're okay either way.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your comments. That concludes those that have signed up to speak this evening on this item. Any council or city administration response this evening? I think it's a great suggestion from David to continue the database. I think I learned this afternoon from Captain Redmond that we are tracking each incident. And I think it's a good idea to continue that. And I believe we will be revisiting this issue as it progresses. I've been here over 40 years, and I know that this issue is more prevalent today than it was 10 years ago. I learned tonight, though, that we're going to have to live with coyote in the city of Troy. But I agree with David that we need to educate everyone. We are going to put this on our webpage. There will be a link. I don't know if contacting all of the dog licensed donors is realistic, and there's probably just as many out there that don't have a license that have dogs. But I guess we can maybe take a look at that.
Yeah, Mayor.
Sit a minute, Kushner.
I think he makes great points, and I think the PowerPoint shed a lot of light on what's actually, as a baseline for where we are. And I think as we go forward, before we start chasing our tail, so to speak, we should, you know, put data together that makes sense and track it and analyze what's happening. And the representative from the DNR, we're so fortunate that we were able to have their expertise both over the last couple of weeks and tonight to present to the city council. So, it will be an ongoing issue, remembering that the city no longer has animal control as a result of previous environment in the economy.
Sure. Go ahead.
David, I admire you for your courage for coming up and speaking to us today, obviously dealing with a difficult subject. I'm glad your dog survived despite the high vet bills. I know that's a very stressful situation and a horrible experience. Along with the education component, I'm hopeful that, I know Terry's here from the Troy Times, hopefully something will go out in the newspaper about this that will provide some of these facts. I think that a lot of our city reads the Troy Times, and that's a good place to educate as well. So, hopefully, that can happen if possible. Thanks.
Good point. Any other council comments? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington.
So, being the one that brought this up in the first place many months ago, hopefully we can put this to bed soon. But I agree, it's a problem. It's something that was never around before. But I don't agree with the DNR that they're great to have around, but it's something unfortunately we have to put up with. But if somebody, if anyone reports, obviously report an attack, but even report to the police if there's a close encounter with your pet. I mean, I'm sure the police would be all over that. And I think that's the key is to, you know, get that message out to the public that if there is an attack, obviously to report it or even a close encounter, and the police will look into it.
Okay. Thank you. Next is regular business. I1 is board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments this evening. So, I'll turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Pennington for his appointments this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. We have multiple appointments on four different committees. I will list them all together, and if there's any objections on any of them, then we'll go back and revisit one at a time. So, I'll list them one at a time. The appointment for the Charter Revision Committee, I would like to appoint Mark Bartnik. There's two appointments for the Election Committee. It's David Henderson, David Anderson, I'm sorry, and Harry Filo. The Liquor Advisor Committee is Andrew Kaltounis. And the Personal Board is Jane Parpart and Pamela Gordon. I'd like to move all of those.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we make those appointments that were read into the record by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington this evening. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Congratulations to those, and thanks for your service to the community. I2 is board and committee nominations. I have two nominations this evening. I would like to nominate James Hatch to the Board of Review for the term that expires Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, that we nominate James Hatch to the Board of Review for the term that expires 1/31/2019. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm going to nominate myself to the Local Development Finance Authority, the LDFA, for the term that expires 11/11/2019. I've been on that board for five years as an alternate, so I'll volunteer to continue. Support. Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Baker, that we appoint myself to the LDFA for the term that expires 11/11/2019. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. There are no city council nominations this evening, correct?
That's correct.
We will move to I3. There is no closed session request this evening. So, I4 is a property assessed clean energy program, better known as PACE. And I see Glenn Laypen, our Economic Development Specialist, is here this evening. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm joined here today by Corey Conley from Levin Energy Partners. He'll be giving a presentation shortly about the PACE program and also be available to answer any questions you might have. PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. This is a financing mechanism that encourages energy efficiency and renewable energy measures in commercial and industrial properties. Traditional financing for energy efficiency projects is difficult because comprehensive energy efficiency upgrades can take up to 20 years to pay back. Through a property special assessment process, PACE enables up to 100% financing, 15- to 20-year terms, and positive cash flow for the life of the project by guaranteeing payment on the financing. If the borrower defaults on a loan payment, the local unit of government places a lien against the property through a special assessment, guaranteeing eventual payment to the lender. Heller Machine Tools, a longtime major Troy company, is currently planning energy improvements to its facility and equity drive. And representatives are here today from them, and Corey will be introducing them in a minute. The PACE program will be of significant assistance to Heller and other Troy companies seeking upgrades to their properties. Encouraging energy efficiency improvements is good for the city of Troy as it increases property values, expands the tax base, makes properties more marketable for today's energy conscious users, and improves owner-tenant satisfaction. The Troy Downtown Development Authority supports the PACE concept. We made a presentation to them in December, and the Troy City Council is being asked to consider implementing a local PACE program, which is enabled by the state of Michigan. There will be no cost to the city with this program administration done by a third party. I'd like to have Corey kind of go through the presentation that's up here and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening, Corey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking the time and for having us. And first, you know, as far as thank yous go, I also want to say, because this is a general policy of ours, we only go places where businesses have asked us to come to try and expand this program. So, I want to thank the Heller Machine Tools representatives and ABM, which is an energy services company which is working with them. And they're here today to hopefully see this move forward. So, thank you, and thank you to them for attending, so.
Thank you.
So, I've got a clicker here, so I can move it myself. But as Glenn mentioned, PACE stands for Property Assessed Clean Energy. And who I am, I'm here with Levin Energy Partners, and we run a statewide program called Lean and Green Michigan, which is a public-private partnership made up of currently 25 local governments that have banded together to develop and implement this program across the state. So, the reason why PACE financing is a good thing and why it is necessary is that you look at buildings across the state of Michigan, here in Troy, you know, we've got a few examples that I've already mentioned. But buildings use 40% to 45% of energy in the United States. 30% of that and the expense is wasted energy. So, some people say energy efficiency, it's really energy waste, right? And that's also wasted expense. So, why aren't businesses taking advantage of this opportunity to reduce their operating costs, which seems like a logical next step? Well, a lot of these upgrades take eight, 10, 12 years to pay back. And a typical loan that you can secure for an energy efficiency project is only going to be at a term of maybe five years. And so, when you look at that, it's still an out-of-pocket expense, and most businesses are looking at much shorter timeframes. So, folks continue wasting money. So, the solution, as we see it and deem it, is Property Assessed Clean Energy. So, it's financing facilitated by a special tax assessment. It allows for 100% financing, 15- to 20-year terms, and a positive cash flow for the life of the project. And I don't know about you all, but when I say positive cash flow, I go to sleep and think of it as jargon. If you look at this little chart here, so basically all we're saying is current energy bill, new energy bill, your PACE payment, and then the positive cash flow is that savings right there. And that's guaranteed by a contractor such as ABM to the property owner. So, a little bit more about Lean and Green Michigan, where we are. It's a statewide PACE marketplace available at no cost to local governments. It's free entry and exit. So, while you would be voting tonight just to pass a resolution of intent to consider the program, if you were to eventually join the program, I can go into those steps, you're free to leave at any point. You're free to add another program that overlaps with ours, choose to use that. It's a non-exclusive program. And then, one of the big keys here, and this gets to the no cost to local government, is that we use private capital to unleash the market. So, rather than asking for any type of local dollars or anything like that, which Michigan's PACE statute allows for public bond, any other public money, or owner-arranged financing, which is private financing in this case, and that's what we focus on, and that's what we ask for local governments to approve. And we're growing very quickly, about one new jurisdiction a month right now, so. So, who's eligible for this? So, commercial properties, industrial, nonprofit, multifamily, agriculture, not single-family homes, and not government buildings. Those are much easier to identify than maybe all of the things that are eligible. What measures are eligible? Anything that reduces energy costs, water efficiency, renewable energy measures. You know, there's a whole list in the state statute that is purely illustrative, and then at the end it says, "or any other utility cost-saving measure." So, it's very broad. It's flexible to what the business needs are, depending on industry, size of the business, et cetera. So, what's the outcome? The outcome is more comprehensive projects that package together the largest energy savings opportunities for local businesses, helping them to reduce their operating costs and help them with PR and all of those types of things. So, a couple of quick examples. I'll go over this one quickly. This was in 2015. The Michigan Public Service Commission is housed in a private building, and so the private property owner agreed to do a PACE special assessment, a PACE project there, helping to save the state government significant amounts of money, improving their property, et cetera. More recently, in fact, as recent as in the last two weeks, Powers Distributing, a beer distributor over in Orion Township, refinanced an energy efficiency and renewable energy project, which was solar and lighting, doing about a $450,000 project, and they're going to save around $40,000 a year, which is a really big and exciting number for folks there. And we just had a ribbon cutting just the other day, and I can share a case study on that if anybody's interested. It gets me excited, but, you know, who knows? And then, last week, we also closed a project with Cambridge Court Apartments over in Mont Colom County. So, different part of the state, different demographic, different type of business, but it's a multifamily housing complex. And they're going to be saving a significant amount of money for their tenants and for the property owner themselves. And we're actually working with them to do another four or five projects across the state. That's one reason why our map looks so odd, is there are properties with this one property owner up in the UPI. I mean it when we only go places when we've got a business owner, right? So, what does it mean for Troy and the city here? Property owners get an opportunity to save money. There's the green PR factor. I know that was a big thing with Powers Distributing. They were very interested in that. Contractors such as ABM and others within the city and in the region get an opportunity for more and bigger projects to help increase efficiency. Local government, it's a free economic development tool to throw into the tool belt for any opportunity for attracting local business, retaining local business, or just helping businesses that are already here. And then, finally, just kind of, you know, and this is something that Martin from ABM says often, is that there's just a huge opportunity in this space in terms of energy waste that's already happening. So, you think about it, businesses have already allocated their budgets toward utility costs, and there's a great opportunity to help them reduce that as a part of their operating costs. So, that's sort of the summary. I managed to skip ahead here in terms of what about the city of Troy. I kind of covered that just now. But the Heller Machine Tools project is really the reason why we're here and what we're so excited about. And ABM is the contractor on that project. I'd happily, I don't want to take too much time, but if maybe Stephen wanted to just say one word or anything about, if you wanted to say something about the project, my apologies for not giving you a heads up. Putting him on the spot.
That's good.
Thank you.
My name is Stephen Simmsar. I'm the CFO at Heller Machine Tools.
I'm the CFO at Heller Machine Tools. We've already reviewed this with our board of directors, and they've already approved this as a project. So once, hopefully, we get the approval from the city council, then we can proceed on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give us just a quick synopsis of what that is? Is it just solar panels, or?
Ours is a roof replacement, and it'll be an insulated roof. It is white, so it reflects off the heat. And then, we have also 33 HVAC units that will be replaced. And there's a couple of other smaller items within the facility.
Okay, thanks.
And that's a great example of the breadth of what the statute allows for. So roofing, you wouldn't typically think of, but it's a pretty common one, actually, given the insulation upgrades that can be made, so. So, what's our role as Levin Energy Partners? Why am I here presenting on this? We are a third-party administrator, so rather than asking local governments to go through the process of drawing up documents to join the program, rather than asking you all to then manage the program, recruit, train contractors, develop relationships with lenders, et cetera, we're here to do that. And Michigan's Public Act 270, which enables local governments to establish PACE districts, also allows for a third-party administrator. And so we tried to take a shared services model across the state with all these local governments, so that everyone can share and have one administrator, one set of rules for business, one set of rules for property owners, et cetera. There's no contractual term or commitment, as I mentioned. You all are free to leave anytime. In some ways, that leaves us kind of exposed, but we are, rest assured, that you all will be pleased with the program and that there will be no reason to. And again, no cost to city or taxpayers. This is something we stand by, so if there are any, you know, there may be opportunities where there's, maybe council wants to review a piece of the PACE project, that fee should be incorporated and documented and incorporated into the final financing fee as a piece of the cost of the financed project. And that's something we encourage to help keep this free and easy for the local government. So, a little bit more about us. Founder Andy Levin, who's not here tonight, but, you know, representing Levin Energy Partners. He was in the state government when this was passed in 2010, has significant experience. And in fact, this looks bad for me, but we've changed this slide a lot. So, that experience on 15 counties and six cities, that's wrong. It's 18 counties and seven cities and townships at this point. That goes to show how quickly we add folks. And then, the cost-effectiveness is the other piece. There are other programs, mostly in other states, that generally charge a fee. Or like, let's say the city of Ann Arbor is the only other program outside of ours in the state of Michigan, and they charged, they hired a nonprofit for a significant amount of money to run that program, and we offer all of that for free, so. So, the next steps in this process, and the statute is pretty clear about how a local government can join the program, and all we're asking tonight is a resolution of intent to continue considering the program. And then, the city would publish a PACE report, make it available for the local residents to review online, hold a public hearing, and then vote on a resolution to establish. The public hearing and resolution to establish can happen at the same time, and really, how quickly those things happen is up to your own procedures here, if that's at all possible. In terms of the actual documentation, we've already provided a draft set of these documents to the city attorney and city manager, and everyone, you know, obviously, welcome to review. There have already been edits made, all of which we're in line with and think look very good. So, that's what I have. I'm happy to answer questions, and I'll see you in the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Corey. Anything else, Glenn?
No.
Thanks. Questions from council for Glenn, or Corey, or Heller?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Abraham.
This seems like a really great tool to not only bring businesses in, but really grow the businesses that are already established here, which is a priority for the city. You know, we just talked about it at the joint session with the DDA. We've had joint sessions with the Planning Commission. It seems like this is a very low-risk opportunity to utilize this tool. I'm curious, though, what concerns may have come out in public hearings that you've had, you know, in the regions where this did get approved, in those 18 counties and seven cities?
Yeah, so, a couple of the, and I actually am happy to, we also kind of have a document that I can share on that, that we've prepared out of those types of questions. And part of my presentation is meant to address those, so maybe the biggest thing we always get is, "How much does this cost?" And so that's why I kept saying, you know, that we're very adamant that we don't want it to cost anything. The second thing is oftentimes folks are concerned about any type of use of public money, which again is the cost issue, but actually, the red-line edits that we receive from the city attorney remove any mention of public dollars from the program. So it isn't, that issue has largely been addressed in that way. Another one, which is one of the reasons why I kept emphasizing that we're non-exclusive, and you all are welcome to enter and leave, no cost either way, there's no contract or anything, is that a lot of folks say, "Well, why do we have to go with this one administrator?" And that ends up being a concern. And that's why we designed it in a way that you all can go and choose a different administrator at any point, if you'd like to. So, those are some of the big ones. I also can provide to, maybe I'll send it to the city manager, or whoever is appropriate, a kind of a list of some of those questions that we get a lot, so.
Councilman Henderson.
Three quick questions. One is, if this gets approved, does your company then approach other businesses in the area to try to promote this to them? Or is this simply, and "simply" is probably a bad terminology, but simply another tool that we can use to present to our businesses locally? And then, if we leave, if we have the opportunity to leave at any time, that does not affect the current contract you would have with Heller, correct? You would still be administrated for that?
Right. So I'll answer that one first. Right, anything that's, any special assessment district established, or any special assessment loan through the PACE program that is put on that property stays, regardless of whether the program no longer exists, because then, that's been put on the property and it stays there. Then, your other question, both. It's meant to be an economic development tool that the local government can pull on at any time, but we also are actively and constantly reaching out to local businesses in all of the jurisdictions we're in. And so we're really excited to have, you know, a great economic development team here that seems to be interested in working with us. But we also work in local governments where they say, "Hey, you go do it, and you go promote it, and you do the trainings and any outreach events and things like that." So we're prepared to do that. We're also prepared to work in tandem, and I think it's sort of both of those things.
One more.
Sure. Go ahead.
Lastly, how quickly does Heller need to have a roof? I mean, is the roof leaking, or is this a longer-term project? Do we need to act quickly, or do we have time to?
That's a good question. What do you say?
That's the same question I asked when they made the presentation to the DDA, and "sooner the better" was what I, I think.
Correct. Sooner than later would be better. The roof is 20 years old. It's the original roof from the original construction of the building. We do have leaks, not major, just in the office area.
It sounds like major.
Depends where you work.
I don't want my computer anywhere.
Any questions from council?
Mayor, if I may just.
I was going to kind of ask something, then go over to you.
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead first.
The proposed resolution does call for a public hearing.
Yes.
At your next meeting.
Okay.
So, if you do pass that resolution, the public hearing is scheduled for your next meeting. Of course, you don't have to take any action at that time, but that is what's proposed.
Thank you. Also, I recall the presentation to the DDA. I was present, and one of my concerns was to have our city attorney review the documents, which has been done. And kind of, a few of the Troy things were added to it, which we're all happy about. But the good thing is, there's just no risk for Troy, is the good thing. And the second good thing, I think, is, what does this mean to me? This means that a company in Troy, Heller, that's been here as long as I can remember, has chose to reinvest in our community and is asking for a tool to use to help them reinvest in our community. So, that's the most important thing to me. And having said that, I'm going to move the resolution as printed in the document this evening. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we approve I-4 as printed in the packet. It's pretty lengthy, so, that's why I didn't read it, but. Any discussion further by council? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, and best of luck to Heller. And I've already talked to two other companies that have a strong interest in the program, so it's a good thing for us, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is I-5. Spring 2016 local road concrete segment replacement. And I, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Kishnik for an introduction of these two great guys.
Just a quick introduction, Mayor, and these two need no introduction, but one of the, one of the things I'm most proud of, being part of the city of Troy, and have been for the last couple of years, is our road reinvestment program, whether it's, and we've spent a lot of time on major roads, and what this presentation does, and of course, Mr. Hootery's going to talk about major roads, because he wouldn't, couldn't come up here if he didn't. But we're now changing the focus and appropriating $2.5 million for the roads and subdivisions, which Kirk does the concrete stuff. So, I wanted to say that this is moving our priorities. However, having said that, and that's the request tonight, the appropriation for the local road improvements, but we thought we'd take this opportunity to show the map and have a presentation on all the roadwork, because it is quite impressive when it ends the presentation from 2012 to 2015, the roadwork that has been done, and that these two continue to do, and they do a great job, and they were doing it long before me. My job is simply to push the envelope with these two.
How's he doing with that?
Very well.
So, as City Manager Kishnik said, our investment has been very, very significant in the city of Troy over the last several years. And one of the reasons is that because of our, one of our strategies is to continue investing in our infrastructure, and it wouldn't be so without this commitment from the city council, and making it one of your top strategies, to continue to invest in our infrastructure. You can see up on the map here, from 2012 to 2015, we have invested over $33 million into our road system, which is, you can see from the map, we've touched a lot of areas in the city of Troy. All the blue highlights, somewhere on that road, we have replaced or resurfaced. So, Bill's going to talk about some of the upcoming spring, 2016 spring, major road projects.
Thank you. Yeah, as City Manager Kishnik said, the emphasis is going to be on local, on the local road system, but I'm not sure how to say that, because we've still got about $13 million worth of major road projects coming, starting this spring. So, it's a pretty significant investment, $13 million, and the city of Troy shares about 2.7 million. So it's a pretty good return on our investment to get 13 million out of it, not including the I-75 project. First and foremost is, we're finally going to do something up at Rochester and South Boulevard, through a partnership with the Road Commission for Oakland County, as well as Rochester Hills. We were able to put together a project to totally reconstruct the intersection of Rochester and South, new signals, and then overlay that entire mile between Liverny and Rochester, and hopefully get a little bit further east of Rochester. Secondly, there is a project by the Road Commission at the intersection of Liverny and South Boulevard that's using an old earmark that would otherwise be pulled back by the federal government. It has to be used on Liverny, so that's why it's not being spread along South Boulevard. The city's share, again, this is a partnership with Rochester Hills and the Road Commission, we each are chipping in about $100,000 on top of the earmark of about $700,000. The Road Commission has a large project on Dequinder. It's kind of Phase 1 of Dequinder, about an $8 million project from just south of Beaumont to north of 59 up to Utica. It widened and reconstructed to a five-lane road that should start up probably in May or June of this year. The city is going to push ahead with the final two miles of overlay on Waddles Road between Rochester and Dequinder. It's about 1.4 million, that's all city funds. And then, Phase 1 of the mega project on I-75 will start up this summer. Significant work probably won't start till later in the summer. It's about a $127 million project, the first phase alone. Our share is about 600,000 of that, because we have a very small portion, about 3,300 feet, 3,400 feet in Troy, so just north of Coolidge to where the Clint River Trail crosses I-75, up in Auburn Hills. And then, the final project on Big Beaver, it's the little purple mark up there, west of, intersecting at Adams. We don't have a share in that project, but it will be something that will impact traffic in Troy, because it will require a full closure at the Rouge. It's a Road Commission project, kind of coupling together some funds from what's called the National Highway Priority Program, NHPP, as well as some critical bridge funds, or local bridge funds. So they're going to replace the structure that crosses the Rouge, as well as reconstruct that entire stretch between Adams and Woodward. So that is also supposed to start up May or June of this year. They're waiting on our project on Waddles to finish up, because we've got a closure there. We're trying to avoid multiple, or parallel miles being closed at the same time. But that one's got a completion date of fall of '16. It's going to have a detour route of Woodward to Long Lake to Adams, and depending on which way you're going, it'd be one way or the other. But that one also is supposed to finish up in the fall. All of these projects would be finished more than likely by the fall of '16, except for the I-75 project, which would be fall of '17. Their completion date is Thanksgiving of '17. And there's going to be a lot more information coming on the I-75 project as it moves forward, so not to spend a great deal of time on that. We're going to come with a lot more information over the next several months, so.
So, to continue our discussion on our local road investment, in the green on the map illustrates what we're proposing to do with the request of the $2.5 million appropriation tonight. In the orange is $2.4 million worth of asphalt overlay work that is already currently in this year's budget, that will be happening this spring. That work is in Section 19, the Big Beaver at Adams. That's a continuation of what we did last year. And then, up in Section 4, which is Crooks and Square Lake area, that is an overlay for a water main project. So, continuing to invest in our asphalt roads, and then with the request for the concrete pavement. Some examples of what you'll see if you were to go out and travel, these proposed areas are illustrated in the pictures. A lot of joint deterioration, deflection. These would be the worst roads in Troy as far as local roads go, that we target. And we do that every year. We establish, you know, what roads need to work the most, go out and identify them, and then put a cost to them. So, as we move forward, some of the reasons why we're coming tonight with this request is a concentration on those subdivision roads. We've done a lot on the major roads, so taking our focus to the subdivision roads. And we're taking advantage of 2015 pricing. HRC did a report for us several months ago that indicated that the construction prices will continue to rise in southeast Michigan, so this is an opportunity to take advantage of those 2015 prices. And continuing our partnership with Delicio. I get a lot of calls, Bill gets calls, you know, "How do you guys do it?" Birmingham is a perfect example. We were out on Big Beaver last summer. "How are you guys doing this so quickly?" The answer is quite simple. We have Delicio, and we really don't want anyone to steal Delicio away from us, because they're a really good contractor, not only willing to work with the city, but in the local roads, if something comes up and they tore out the road and they need to move, or they're getting the delivery, this contractor will go in and put asphalt millings in, realign the work schedule, and not miss a beat. They're a really good contractor to have in the city of Troy. So as we move forward, this map includes the proposed work that we're proposing tonight, and all the way back to 2012. So you can see our significant infrastructure investment in the city of Troy for the last four years. And happy to answer any questions. And happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
I love how you started out with the picture, because it looked like 16 Mile, I recognized being stuck in that traffic a few times. But, so the question, Bill, would be on the 16 Mile project, so you said you're not going to start on that until they have the Waddles project finished?
Yeah, it's, it's actually a Road Commission project, it's not a city of Troy project. I just brought it here, there's been some questions about it, there's, there was a press release a little while back, and there's been some questions, because it will require a closure. Yeah, what they're looking at is trying to start, the Waddles project is roughly mid-May, late May to complete and open back up, so once that opens back up, the Road Commission is looking to start that project, the Big Beaver project. They would start in May if they could, but odds are very good it'll probably be June before that starts.
Will that intersection in Troy be closed, or is it up, up to?
No, the.
Is that Adams?
From what I know, is roughly kind of where the, the new concrete ends. Somewhere in that point, they'll have a, they'll probably have a hard closure, they need to provide for local road, or local access, so, to get into some of the subdivisions, east and west of the Rouge. So, they're gonna have a hard closure at the Rouge, you'll be able to get through the intersection, but you won't be able to get from Adams to Woodward.
Okay.
So, you'll be able, if you wanted to go up, what is that road there on the north there?
Kensington.
Kensington. So, you should be able to get to Kensington, but you wouldn't be able to get through to Woodward. I haven't seen the final, the final detour plans or anything like that, but the Road Commission is sharing their information with us, as well as with Birmingham, trying to keep all of the, the agencies around them kind of up to date on what's going on with that project.
Okay.
And so, we'll share that. Glenn's put some, he's, I think he took off already. Glenn has been getting a lot of questions from the businesses.
Right.
As to what the impact is, so what we're gonna try and do is, is, there's a project on Maple as well, that's had some interest, to try and get that information from the city of Birmingham, as well as the Road Commission, and get it on our website as well, so that people have that, not only just projects in the city of Troy proper, but projects that impact their employees coming to or from, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Councilman Henderson.
Troy roads rock, the website still exists?
It does.
Does it? And is it current, and it will be updated with everything that's gonna happen?
We can work on that, yes. Yeah, yeah, I think people have learned to look for it, so it's probably gonna be an appropriate place to update and put this type of information up there.
Good, good point. I think Waddles, there's some coordination going on with the school, with Athens, I assume?
Yeah, yeah, we are, but we're trying to kind of do what Kurt's doing with Delicio, with Proline, who did the Waddles overlays projects this year, and did them pretty well, pretty good job. Trying to extend the current contract prices. Part of the issue there is, if he can do it before June, he can extend 2015 contract prices, but that puts us into the, end of the school year. If we do it after then, he's not sure he can hold the contract prices, because his suppliers and the vendors that supply him are kind of him and an han about whether they can hold prices. We would like to try and start right after Memorial Day, be done by Labor Day, to try and avoid the school year, because we're also gonna go north and south on John R., kind of the asphalt section that ties into the concrete, that's kind of rough. So, there's a lot of work at the intersection itself, so, trying to work that out and get a quote from the contractor that we would bring back to you to try and get that, that project moving as quickly as we can. But yeah, there'll be further discussions with the school, once we have an idea of what pricing is, because it's gonna be a kind of cost-benefit type analysis as to, impact of the school costs this much, that type of look see at it.
Great. Good to hear about South Boulevard.
Yep. And we, we are still talking, every time I run into the Road Commission or staff from Rochester Hills, I keep putting it in their ear, that we still would like to, as new money funnels in, we would like to try and put it on South Boulevard as much as we can. It doesn't qualify for a lot of federal funding categories, so it's, it's kind of unique in that we need to look for different ways to fund projects up there, so. Road Commission is very open and receptive to that, we're working on Rochester Hills to get them in the same place.
Great. As far as the resolution goes, personally, I, I have very little problem putting our money into our local roads. I had a little issue helping do county roads, but I understand that we needed to do that, but I feel real good about reinvesting our, our money back into our local roads, our infrastructure, our roads where the citizens live. I don't have any problem with that, personally. Any other questions? Somebody like to move the resolution? Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Like to move I-5, the spring 2015 local road concrete segment replacement as printed.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Pennington, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I-5, the spring 2016 local road concrete segment replacement as printed in the agenda. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the consent agenda, has anyone on council wished to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson.
I can move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet this evening. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you're here today, or tonight, for a consent agenda item, they've all been approved this evening. Next is memorandums and future council agenda items. There are three items in the agenda packet for future public hearings, A, B, and C. Did staff wish to speak on any of those items this evening, Ms. Dixon?
No, we don't, and there were some questions, though, today, from Councilmember Henderson that we've already answered, and just more information as you, as you need, please request it, and we'll get it out to all council members, and also to anyone who's interested. And then, there'll be presentations at the next meeting.
Very good. Any questions from council regarding the public hearings? There is a public hearing announcement for February the 8th, 2016, which is a zoning ordinance text amendment, better known as a woodland protection for trees. Also, February 8th, there will be a street vacation request, and a property assessed clean energy program public hearing. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to public, or council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Henderson.
Just wanted to make mention that our, our own Ethan D. Baker has been nominated for the 40 Under 40, which Oakland County, it's a project by Oakland County, recognizing individuals under the age of 40 in the business community, and Ethan got that award, as well as Doug Teets. Doug Teets was also on the list.
Is he under 40?
He's under 40.
Wow.
Congratulations.
I think Doug squeaked in.
Congratulations, Ethan.
Thank you.
You'll be part of the state of the state?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Or state, state of the county.
State of the county.
State of the county.
Mr. Mayor, I think it should be noted that our own city attorney, Lori Bloom, has received the designation 40 Under 40. Is that right?
Just a couple of years ago.
It was last year.
I was aware of that, and I do remember that. That, that's a, that's a very, very nice award. Very nice. Any other council comments? Councilwoman Abraham.
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize I'm a member of the community who has really helped bring Troy forward, and unfortunately, is no longer part of this community. Bill Cowger, for many years, really supported this community in his efforts and leadership in the Chamber, and in the Troy Rotary Club. A lot of people may know Bill, even if you didn't know his name, if you ever visited the Troy Library and saw his wonderful photographs from his African safaris up on the wall. Bill advanced this community in more ways than ever could be described briefly. Bill lost his battle with cancer, he fought bravely for seven months, and passed away on Thursday, right around the same time that the Chamber was giving an award for the Troy Transit Center, of which he was a huge proponent of. So, I just wanted to recognize Bill, and thank him, thank his family for allowing him to be such a big part of Troy's development. He will be missed very, very much.
Thank you. I was going to mention that this evening also. You know, Bill was one of the good ones, you know, one of the good guys, a good friend of mine, and gonna miss him a lot. Any other council comments? Next is reports, any comments from council regarding the reports in the packet this evening? There is no closed session request this evening, so thank you for coming tonight, we are adjourned.